... informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings, and we'll be having one right after this at 6 o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started with Board Communications, Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, sir. I'm still working on housing. It's a, it's a long-term, big-picture issue. I'm still working on fire. We've got a meeting tomorrow. Working on Web is, as, working on water, as Commissioner Webb pointed out, she's working internally. I'm working to get us linked up with the systems through AOC. Those are the big issues that I see, the, the constraints on the economy from housing and the focus that Commissioner Bangs has on childcare. Those are the underlying system issues. So I'm hopeful that as we proceed as individual commissioners and as a body and as part of the county and with all our partners, we'll make the difference we want to make. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Bangs?
Um, I'll hold my report until the regular meeting.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Commissioner Toyoka?
Well, good evening, everyone. Just short, sweet, just to admit for as far as public works in the needs assessment. You know, after our site visit, just did some more visits to other sites, just kind of toured around the county as well as talking to more individuals to get, you know, wanted to get the broader picture and kind of understand for a lot of the constituent emails and letters that are coming in. Wanted to get their, you know, their point of focus from the ground view from the sites that we're discussing. So hopefully that did some good, brought more insight into our discussion coming up today.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Appreciate your work on that. Commissioner Webb?
Yes, hello from the East Coast. Um, I'm, I had the worst travel day I think of my life yesterday, but I'm here and I'm with my babies and so the world is very good. I will wait until the meeting before I do a report.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Thanks for joining us time zones away. Enjoy your stay out there as well. We, I attended a Sunset Empire Parks and Rec meeting this afternoon. It's involving the recreation, Sunset Recreation Center and the repurpose and redesign of the middle school there, and the topic and focus was childcare. And they were having a meeting of stakeholders. It was interesting because it's kind of mirroring what we are doing here in Clatsop County. We'll be holding a stakeholder meeting next Tuesday at 3 o'clock. And I think it's a fortuitous development that they're going through the same process in trying to identify strategies to, to help meet the needs of the community with regards to childcare. I'll talk a little bit more about it during my report as well. But it was a good meeting and I think it, it will fold nicely into what we're doing here in Clatsop County. And then also my, I guess condolences go out to the, to the Whistler family, family of Sam Whistler, Astoria Police Department Officer who passed, only 26 years old and has a wife and two kids. And certainly this is felt throughout the law enforcement community in Clatsop County. Yet again, our condolences go to him, go to his family. And with that, I'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is discussing the formal agenda. Any questions or comments on the agenda this evening? Okay. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to our one and only topic of the work session, which is the Public Works Facility Needs Assessment. That's on page three of the packet. And I am going to turn it over to our county manager, Don Boone.
Chair Quayle, members of the board, thank you and good evening to everybody. Before I get too far, I just want to reiterate that this is a work session. Staff has taken the opportunity to brief your board on the work that's been ongoing with the Public Works Facility. I would just want to under, underline and emphasize it's not the end of the process. It's just another step and they, there will be more as we go through this. From my experience, facility assessment processes are typically both data and value-driven. And honestly, that's what makes them a very challenging public policy process. And so on the data side, we've considered a number, number of integral elements that ideally inform your, your decision-making process. McKenzie will be going over much of that. And this, you know, typically will include space requirements, special uses, location, availability of suitable land, adjacencies, transportation zoning codes, infrastructure, financial wherewithal, and a number of other elements. And so, you know, you'll be receiving some information about those various elements as we move forward. On the value side though, it comes down to serving the public well, being good public stewards. You know, responding to quality of life concerns and goals of the communities and neighborhoods. And then really weighing all the competing priorities that come out of that value side. It's never an easy or straightforward process and it ultimately comes down to individual assessments of those various data points and of those value points. And I think the Public Works Facility has, has really been similar to a lot of these processes that I've been involved with over my 30 years. Just as a reminder, the initial, the initial impetus for the project was to relocate the inundation zone, was to relocate the facilities out of the inundation zone and south of the river. This eventually morphed into more than 20 criteria used to assess various sites for suitability. And this included both properties that were on the market and properties that were not on the market. McKenzie will be providing an overview of this process and the recommendation that came from that process. But I want to be clear that, you know, beyond this recommendation, staff is aware that depending upon how you weigh the data and the values, that there are other options on, on the table. And I just want to just highlight those because I think that, that they may come up later in the conversation. You know, one of those options is the board generally embraces the siting criteria, but really opts to look for some additional sites. Or, and a, a third option would be you weigh all the factors and you decide that remaining at, at the current site with some improvements and locating an appropriate satellite office may be the right path forward. So there are various options on, on the table and your board may even come up with more. So, you know, I just want to really reiterate that the process we use is really kind of a standard process, but then it comes down to these values and the interpretation of the data. And that's a very individualized process. So, so that's all that I have. I'm going to go ahead and have Adam and Jeff from McKenzie take it from here with their overview and then Monica and I will follow. Thank you, Chair Quayle.
Sounds great. Thank you very much, everybody. Monica, you mentioned that there was going to be a link or somebody was able to, so I could share my screen on my end. Is there something that I should be doing for that?
Invite for that.
Say that again?
Teresa will send you an invite to, to make it so you can screen share.
Okay. Sounds great. There it is. Perfect. Well, while that's being orchestrated, thank you for, for having us. My name is Jeff Humphries. I'm an architect and one of the principals at McKenzie. And Adam, I actually don't see you on the, on the camera here, probably because you're screen sharing. But with me today, Adam Olson, who is also one of our architects and a project manager and managed the project for Clatsop County. As Mr. Bond had described, McKenzie was hired to evaluate your current public works facilities and to help identify sites and evaluate the sites to move your facilities out of the inundation zone. McKenzie, I should say, Clatsop County went through a rigorous process of evaluating candidates and selected McKenzie based on our experience. We have experience with this project type, currently wrapping up a project for Canby Utility. Been working with the city of Vancouver. And then we have experience working on the coast, closest proximity to Astoria for their public safety building assessment. And they're working the same process of trying to locate their building outside of the inundation zone. So this is our handsome mugs here, if you will. And I think the first thing that we're going to talk about is the different steps that we went through. We do, I think, want to encourage you to ask questions if you have those. So Adam, I want to give it to you.
Yep, sounds good. So for task one, McKenzie walked the existing public works facility. And we were also asked to walk the Svenson substation as well as the Jewel substation. And what we had done is after we had reviewed those three sites, we put together a final summary of our findings and we put together a high-level aerial photograph map and just identified some of the existing conditions of those sites. And then we had also put together some photo pages from documenting, documenting our visits and basically evaluating some of the deficiencies, ADA concerns, security concerns, as well as any sort of life, safety and code issues that we identified from those different sites. So that's, that's all-inclusive in the report. And it's my understanding that that is posted to the website right now for folks to be able to access that. And there's, there's still a few, just so you know, small, small changes, you know, grammatical things that we're still working through. It's probably 99.5% complete, but we're, we're planning to be completely done with our report, but it does not change the substantial, you know, content that we'll be reviewing with you all today, so.
Okay, the next task we actually did, and this is kind of the meat of a needs assessment, is developing the program. The program is an itemization of all the rooms and spaces and site requirements that will be required for the project. So to go through this process, we distributed a questionnaire to key staff within Public Works. And then from that questionnaire, we developed a spreadsheet. This is, this and the next slide or so are the summary pages of what came out of that. After we developed the spreadsheet, we got together with Commissioner Webb and Commissioner Toyoka as well as the Public Works Director and Key Staff and went through room by room and made sure that we had everything accounted for. And so I can just kind of highlight to you a few different things here from my notes. There are about half a dozen buildings that are required through the programming effort. There's an office space, shop, enclosed vehicle storage, covered storage. There's yard space, there's the sheriff, and then the sheriff's garage space. So those are kind of the programmatic built elements in addition to the yard. So these are the summary pages that you actually see of the program. It's a forecast that shows what their existing conditions are, what they need to move in. These are the columns you can see here. And on the far right of the columns, what would be required at 20 years out because we're looking for the long-term growth of, and needs for the, for the county. Okay. After, after we had gone through the preliminary programming, then we went through and we identified recently completed public works facilities to tour. The objective there was to tour facilities, look at what their adjacencies were, look at how they had actually laid things out, look at the sizes of those, and then reflect back on what the program that had been developed was and make any adjustments that were required. So these are the five different facilities you can see on the map that we actually toured. These, each of these different facilities were identified by county staff as to a specific reason as to why they actually wanted to tour those, and that's actually in the report, the summary of that. So the first one was Thurston County, up in Washington. That was the most recent completed one that we actually toured. That was on the first day. I think on that next page that Adam was showing was Washington County. We also toured Fairview, which was, I think, the only municipality that we, no, I take that back. We toured two different municipalities, Fairview Public Works as well as like as we go. And then we also toured the Yanville County Public Works Facility.
So on to task four. This is where we evaluated the 15 sites that were identified by the county. And the county had identified these as essentially viable options for the public works facility. There, the furthest south site that we evaluated was item number 12 here that you can see in the screen, and it was Crown Camp. And the intent, there were no sites evaluated further south than that. And the intent was that the new public works facility would be further south than it is today, closer to central and south portions for serving those areas of the county and for walk-in public that are also on the south and west sides of the Lewis and Clark River and the Youngs River. Also, when looking at the feasible land, land options kind of further south than Crown Camp, there just wasn't a lot of large, flat enough parcels that were out of the inundation zone or, or around that area. So that was kind of the reasoning for the cutoff at that, at that point. And then what we had done is we started to, as we were in the information gathering phase of the project, we received some assistance from county planning staff to help us with investigating, you know, land use processes for the different sites and slopes and trees and minimum landscaping and setbacks and looking at all of those different parameters that each of these sites entails and basically putting that into a report so that we can eventually start to evaluate these kind of on an apples-by-apples basis. And we had created maps of each of the sites and identified, you know, the yellow area, for instance, being flood inundation areas and wetland areas so that it could, could help us once we got to the process of, you know, ultimately scoring sites and choosing which sites we wanted to move forward with. So here were the 15 sites that we evaluated and there's an eight A and eight B. So that, that's what made the 15 sites. So what we did is we went, we started basically with the list of 15 and then we had essentially removed seven for a number of reasons. And they were pretty easy to remove from the list because they, for a number of reasons. They were in the flood inundation zone, they had a difficult land use process, site access in a flood event, or they were no longer available as we moved through the, the needs assessment process. So on the eight remaining sites here that you see, we then evaluated those on a list of criteria that McKenzie has utilized on other public works facilities. And then we had also coordinated with Clatsop County and they had identified a few additional criteria that we ranked each of these individual sites against each other. So I mean, these, it's part of the ranking criteria was related to, as you can see in this list here, it's, you know, how much does, do the properties cost? You know, what is the shape? And looking at its prominence and access to, for vehicular use. And then going down the list here, we've got, you know, what is the security potentially like on the site? What, what kind of traffic may, may be experienced? Neighborhood context, you know, is there nearby residential properties, industrial, commercial? Looking at all of those factors. And then starting to look at things like geographic location, is something better located than the other, another property? And we absolutely found that that was the case related to the rivers and the county. And then looking at things like response time and, and then starting to look at things, properties that were in the inundation zone, which properties had wetlands that needed to be dealt with as well as availability of utilities to ultimately serve the site. And then what we did is I'm going to zoom in just a little bit here. For, for the remaining eight sites, we had a ranking criteria where, you know, zero on a scale of zero to five, participants, they scored each of the eight remaining sites. And the score of zero was that it was not a very good fit for, for that particular criteria, all the way from zero to five, where five was the most suited for a particular site. So we had Commissioner Webb scored on each of the individual sites, as did Commissioner Toyoka. And then Monica had as well. And then the Public Works crew of Ted, Terry and Dean, they each kind of collectively scored each of the sites. And then Gail from planning also was involved in that process. So you can kind of see we put their initials here at the tops of the columns and how they scored each of the individual criteria for each of the sites. And as you can see here, at the end of the process, and I'm going to zoom back out here, the Airport Hill site was the one that ultimately scored the best. And then the Sorting Yard, site number nine, came in second place. And then going back to the first page, the North Coast Business Park came essentially in third place. So after that, we took those, essentially those top three sites that scored first, second and third. And we took the square footages that Jeff identified in the earlier task of programming. We started to essentially draw boxes on a site plan and scale those boxes and, you know, see if those square footages will ultimately fit on those sites and, and looking at where setbacks are and where wetlands are and flood inundation zones are. And so we did basically the site test fits on those top three highest-ranked sites. And right about the same time that we were doing our site test fits, we had discovered that, that the Airport Hill property, which did originally score a rank first in the scoring process, we found out through, just kind of moving through the process, that the Airport Hill property owner wasn't interested in selling. And so at that point, kind of from that point forward, the team proceeded with the North Coast Business Park site as well as the Sorting Yard site, so.
So, as Adam had indicated, the, the first step was really kind of going through a test fit that just basically showed that we could get all the programmatic elements on the site. We met with key staff from the county and Public Works and, and walked them through that test fit and solicited their input. And the, these next couple diagrams here are the refinements to the site plans that moved from a, yep, it fits to a, no, no, this, this is starting to incorporate a flow that would meet the needs for Public Works. So the last site you could see was the Business Park. This is a sorting site here. On this one, I'll just highlight, you, you might look at it and think, well, that's weird. Why did you put it at an angle there? And that's corresponding to the slope of the site. So these buildings are fairly long buildings and so they, they want to have a generally a flat footprint. And so we're going with the contours through the GIS information. So then moving away from the site and then getting into a little bit of a level of detail for adjacencies for the, the major building elements. This one being the, the office portion for Public Works. We went through and laid out each of the different divisions within Public Works, including the common spaces. And so here you can kind of see how that would lay out. The gray tones are common areas and circulation space. The green area is the training and the lockers and the toilets, toilet facilities, those sorts of things. Down at the bottom of the page there is where the public entry is. And then the cream areas there, that's the lobby and areas that the public could actually be able to come into the space and, and interface with staff at counters. So that's an overview of the Public Works Office Building. This next one is a adjacency diagram with the shop. And I should share with you that we went through similar process that we did for the site diagrams and that we laid out a couple of options of how they might be. And then we met with staff and got their input and made refinements so that it met what their expectations were. So these had gone through a few different versions to get to, to what you're looking at right now. This, this is one of the other facilities that is not just vehicle storage. So here you have mechanic spades, you've got office space, you have storage for equipment. You have an overhead crane, mezzanine up above. So there's a lot of different pieces associated with what this facility is here. And so that's what that layout is.
And so after we were through the conceptual design process and we had vetted that with the team of those floor plans and adjacencies, we then moved into project cost development for, just for, I mean, literally globally for the project. And this includes hard costs and soft costs. And we worked, McKinsey had a cost consultant, construction focus come on board. And they helped us with a ground-up estimate that was ultimately based on the conceptual design documents, the site plan, the floor plans. And we had some pretty detailed narratives that went along with those that our cost consultant could utilize. And we got feedback from Clatsop County Public Works staff through the whole process there. But this, this spreadsheet here that I'm showing, and I'll, I'll zoom into these different areas here in just a moment. I just want to give you a sense of sort of the overall, of overall sheet. And the, the blue section is essentially what our cost estimator had mostly helped us with. And, and the blue is your, your hard costs and those include your materials, your labor, your contractor margins. And then the area in the green is consultant costs. And the area in orange are basically other owner costs that are outside of the general contractor's scope of work. And those are what's in orange there. And then we summarized everything up at the very end here in yellow. So if I zoom into the blue section just for a moment here, so this is strictly hard costs. And like I said, this includes labor and materials up in this top section. And then the middle section here is related to general contractor margins and markups such as, you know, general conditions and insurance and bonds. We also did escalate the project out a bit depending on when each of these sites, when we felt that, that construction was appropriate to occur after it had gone through the appropriate design and land use and permitting processes. And then at the bottom here, we also did look at what development costs. I mean, this is more related to off-site costs, frontage improvement costs, wetlands mitigation costs is sort of this bottom section that we looked at. And you can, right off the bat, you can kind of see the difference between, wow, the North Coast Business Park has a much higher development cost than the Sorting Yard site. So it's those factors that we're looking back and forth at and kind of comparing and contrasting them.
Adam, you just, just to note these, both factor in prevailing way as well as the facility being a facility. Brings the cost up than, than a regular commercial structure would be.
Yes, thank you for clarifying. And these are, so the green section being anticipated consultant estimated costs on the project in the green. And then we also, we, you know, we've added some, some contingencies here in case, you know, additional consultants come, come on board or whether change orders become apparent as, as we expand the design of the project and, and dial that in as we move through the process. And then the owner cost is what's in orange here. And this is related to items that the general contractor wouldn't necessarily be responsible for. And this includes things like for land acquisitions and moving costs and permit fees. So, and then at the very bottom here in yellow are basically the final tallies of the North Coast Business Park and the Sorting Yard sites. And this is the, you know, essentially the all-in hard cost and soft cost on the project. And as you can see, the, the North Coast Business Park is approximately $450,000 more expensive than, from a cost standpoint than the Sorting Yard. So that's kind of where we landed as, at, at the end of the costing process, so.
So just as a wrap up, the next steps for the county include identifying what the desired site is, developing the timeline and
developing the timeline, and establishing the budget for the project, building on what has already been presented to you here, and then investigating a phased project approach and project refinement. I believe that is aimed more at just the sheer size of the project. Of course, with the pandemic and the aftermath, costs are being driven up. And so I think that the project is being forecast to be higher than what was originally anticipated. Related to that, determining a funding mechanism. And then continuing outreach. We know that the county has already been doing a lot. This is a step in that direction. The bonds indicated there still would be more steps associated with that. I know that the public is always very interested in how the dollars are being spent and how essential services are going to be maintained or improved. And so I think with that, I believe we're turning it over to Monica and are making ourselves available for questions part of that, too.
Thanks, Jeff and Adam. So, yeah, just to kind of summarize and reiterate what Dawn said at the beginning. So there's several different options that are available to the board based on this assessment. And so depending on what your board should choose to do, you could continue to move forward with the relocation of the whole facility based on the several factors, the scoring criteria that were identified. You could choose to stay where we are, understanding that there would need to be site upgrades made to where we're at, as well as identify a place for a satellite location south of the rivers. You could choose to stay where you're at now as-is. You could choose to continue moving forward with this project, but just have staff continue to search for alternate property options. And so those are some of your options that are available. And like Dawn mentioned, you also may come up with others. One thing that staff is recommending not to relocate to is the North Coast Business Park. And part of that is because as a county, we have limited industrial lands available to us. Industrial lands are those lands that are available for job creation. The mitigating onsite, based on the previous work done, we identified that of those approximately 130 acres, that really there would only be approximately 30 acres available for development. So then if you did move the Public Works facility there, you're again limiting the industrial land available. And ideally, the county would like to see that property, the land, as well as any future land improvements and building improvements back on the tax rolls. And so should your board choose to select the Sorting Yard and agree with the staff recommendation not to site at the North Coast Business Park, you could direct, I'm sorry, I apologize. Should you choose not to select the Sorting Yard, you could direct staff to continue to move forward based on the existing criteria, like I mentioned, as far as a complete relocation or some of those other options that were previously stated. And so Adam and Jeff, as well as staff, are all here to address any questions that the board has.
Thank you, Monica. Are there any questions from the Commission of McKinsey, Jeff and Adam from McKinsey, or the staff? See, Commissioner Thompson has her hand up. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, sir. Well, forgive me if I'm eager to ask questions. Could we take down the slide, stop sharing, so we can see each other more? Thank you. So I've been studying community emergency response since 2008. And I appreciate that we're looking at inundation, but there are other additional factors. When we went out to the current Public Works facility, we heard that there is a slide zone above the current facility. We also heard that the city of Astoria has a five-and-a-half-monat gallon water tank was above the facility and a flow path down toward it. So I wondered if you looked at additional hazards like slide zones? Did you look at fire danger? Did you look at any other hazards or only inundation when you were evaluating sites?
Well, when we were evaluating the sites, I mean, we were looking, it was mainly focused on the existing buildings themselves. And do those spaces, are they able to accommodate staff in their current situation? But it always felt like the big elephant in the room was that almost the entire site is in the flood inundation zone. It was later on in the process that I was made aware of the items above the hill that could potentially cause the concerns that you just described about the reservoir up there. I think it was drinking water or something like that that Ted and I were talking about. And that did not necessarily make it into the report, but it was something that came up. But it's certainly something, if desired, that that's something that could get layered in. But it's, we didn't really have, I think, a whole lot of data other than, oh, did you know that this was where the drinking water was located? And if something was compromised up at that location, it could potentially do this to the particular site. We didn't have like grading and flow paths of all that, of those items. But it was something that we were made aware of in the process.
Commissioner, if I may just add to that. Early on, before we brought McKinsey on to this project, there were requests made by the public for a geological study of the Sorting Yard. So we did have foreign geosciences do that work in regards to the Sorting Yard. And so they did address that the area that we would be looking at putting the facility on the Sorting Yard is not in the slide zone.
Well, right, so the slide, so the Sorting Yard isn't a slide zone, but the current facility is in a slide zone. I get, here's my guess, sir. I've had heartburn for over a decade on what's going to happen to people in Clatsop County if we have a tsunami, if we have an earthquake, fires, all of that stuff. So I'm delighted that we're considering this. It's a big elephant to start chewing on. If we're talking about keeping our leadership for county Public Works, which is essential in my mind to any recovery in anything but the safest place possible, I don't think that's a good idea. I want to treasure our county staff and the skill they represent. I want to properly value the worth of that very expensive Public Works equipment. I want to keep the people and the machines safe, no matter where we put them.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. No, I would like to hear from Commissioner Toyoka and Commissioner Webb that sat on the Public Works Facility Needs Task Force.
Hello, Commissioner Toyoka. You know, it's, there's a ton of information. And fortunately or unfortunately for McKinsey and all the group, I actually read everything you published. And it was well done, and there's a ton of information there. But instead of just taking that information, I kind of extrapolated and looked at the current site using your criteria. I looked at other, you know, avenues, you know, using, you know, you brought in some very intelligent criteria and decision path processes into this. And if you apply that same, you know, thought process to the locations, in my mind, I'm just thinking, you know, when we talked about the water and the potential slide above Public Works, you know, one thing I thought of is for the county and the taxpayers and the people of the county, we sell that property, then we transfer that problem to someone else, one of our constituents. That's not right either. So when the thought of resiliency, how do we address that as a part of it? You know, put that in the equation of what we're doing. You know, so, and then also looking at all the factors, does the county have all the equipment necessary to provide those services? Or are we parsing out to state agencies to help us in those situations? You know, would the county be better off having, you know, equipment staged elsewhere instead of all in one location? Do we have another satellite site for fuel and large equipment that would help us in those situations? So again, all of your information was wonderful. It did stir a lot of thought processes that, you know, I think that the current site is viable and that, you know, with resiliency, you know, measures, you could mitigate the slide. You can, you know, bring, you know, make that a viable site. So there's a lot, this is not just a cut, and I don't believe it's a cut and dry. We move here and everything is fine. I think you have to look at it in other facets. So from all of your meetings, all your data, I'm still assimilating information, but I don't see that there's a clear path. There is no clear path that, you know, suits all the needs. So, you know, I think we need to continue on and look at all the avenues for us and to kind of evaluate how it best serves the county and the people of the county.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Commissioner Webb.
Thank you. This was a lengthy and an arduous task. And I was certainly very pleased at the performance of McKinsey. Both of the McKinsey projects, in fact, because we received, we had got a lot more insight into the Business Park than we had when we started. And I thought, I thought that was really very good. For me, there are several issues at hand. I've been a practicing planner in Oregon for about 35 years. And I have watched the natural hazards become much more important to be dealt with by governments. I think we have had enough windstorms like in 2007. We've had enough blowdowns. We've had enough, and certainly enough slides, to know that those issues are extremely costly and that we have to begin from now on, we have to begin supplying, investing in the infrastructure, which allows us to be more resilient. There is an extensive program that is ongoing with our, with our resiliency staff, which includes many of our departments. And we have to be making smart decisions for the future. I think we have to be not thinking in terms of short-term costs, but long-term costs and benefits. A, I don't know how many of you have ever seen the video that was created by OSU Extension about this tsunami inundation zones. And I think that we need to begin talking about this issue to a much greater extent. And I think that when, when we talk about the organization that is probably the most critical in terms of recovery in any kind of a natural disaster, our Public Works Department is probably the most important public entity other than our communications people who will be, who will be addressing resiliency issues. One of the things that I don't think McKinsey did note was that the, our present chief, what is it, CEO? The chief operating response, help me out with the acronym, guys, that is now in, I know this thing like the back of my hand, that is now in our military installation.
EOC?
EOC, thank you, Monica. Emergency Operations Center. One of the things that we took a close look at was using any new facility that we build with another, a few more benefits for county staff. We talked about locating perhaps some kind of a public access center for even the clerk's office, perhaps, definitely for economic, for our development department. We talked about making this space that we would build as creative and as diverse as possible in order to really give us a presence farther south. There are those who dispute that the Sorting Yard is not in South County. That's true. But one of the really big challenges for any project in Clatsop County is our road system. We have a road system that is defined by, I mean, I call it a box without a lid. You know, we have Route 30, we have 101, and we have 26. And that really constrains how we can operationally respond very, very quickly to any kind of a hazardous event. And I think that the idea of reinvesting in the present site is a very foolhardy, because not only is this not a terribly good site from a natural hazard standpoint. So why would we, why would we do that? Why would we put good money on a site that we know is a bad site? That's how we started this whole process. We talked about the possibility of building something that had, for instance, something like a big meeting room, where, because a lot of us, even those of us whose districts aren't in South County, a lot of us feel that it would be much better to be able to have public meetings, even board meetings, in places other than Astoria. And we've designed this space to be able to accommodate something like that. The EOC, I think, is almost an impossible situation on the coast where it is. We've got to have a place where we can assemble decision-makers to make smart decisions. And that place cannot be in an inundation zone. And it needs to be seismically stable and possible to get to. So to me, those were large criteria. The Sorting Yard, I think, meets, unfortunately, a lot of the public comments that we've been getting have been inaccurate. We checked out to NEPA issues on this site, and we have dispelled any problems with that. So to me, I think there's a very clear path that leads to the Sorting Yard with perhaps some other adjustments. From an operational standpoint, aside from there ever being any kind of of a natural hazard event, we, we have satellites now, we have two. We could certainly put more satellites south of this facility. But I would encourage you all to take a look at the topographic map of Clatsop County, because it's one of the most diverse elevations I have ever seen in any place I've ever worked. And so we have to pay attention to landslides and to inundation zones and to present infrastructure. And we have to be able to extend our service area responsibly to wherever in the county we need to do it. I think you all have heard me say before that I'm not real impressed with the North Coast Business Park in general. But I think the mitigation, the wetland mitigation, which McKinsey addressed very directly, and I was really glad to see that happen, where somebody finally took a look at that, the entire property, and said, okay, this is what can really work here. And it's not a lot. But as precious as our industrial properties are, I think we need to save it and to be able to keep things on the tax rolls. So I think that's my, I think that's my gage.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Just my comment, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Banks right afterwards. But I guess my comment would be, you know, we're not necessarily designing an EOC here. And we aren't designing something just to withstand tsunami. This is, it needs to respond to any emergency in Clatsop. to respond to any emergency in Clatsop. And I do think that there are opportunities, perhaps, locate a satellite facility that's more southern or more southerly located within the county to provide emergency assistance to areas that are not well-suited or not well-close to where we're at now in Astoria. I would like to see the option of looking at to fortify the existing facility and look to locate a satellite facility in the south part of the county. That would be something I'd like to explore. I don't think a full relocation of the public works facility is really needed at this time. That's my feeling about it. Commissioner Banks?
Thank you. I guess, you know, I wasn't in office with the previous conversations when the development of the 20 criteria, you know, occurred. And for me, when I think about the relocation of this office, I also don't think about creating meeting spaces and creating a location to hold meetings. I feel like we have enough sites across our county, you know, our public libraries, so on and so forth. Pam, please don't interrupt me. Thank you. And so I, you know, when I think about this, I'm thinking about it from a more frugal perspective. And at the last work session at the sort yard, I saw those three options: remodel the current location and create a substation in South County. Move to the business park or move to the sort yard. And I'll be frank, after reading, it was a really well-done McKenzie group, you did an amazing job with developing all of these answers, but when I 56 million is a hard pass for me. I am aware that we can project a potential closer to possibly 30 million. That still doesn't appeal to me. As I read the report, I noted a huge discrepancy between the cost of the 10 sites that our task force toured and our personal projections. 10 million versus 56 million. 10 million is much more palatable for obvious reasons. I also noted in the report that the business park and the sort yard are still in inundation zones, which for me eliminates the logic of moving the facility. I can't justify moving from one inundation zone and into a different location but is still in an inundation zone. So for me personally, I'm going to just be blunt and throw my cards out on the table and say that removes option two and three for me, which would be option two, moving to the business park, or option three, moving to the sort yard. I feel like both of those, for me personally, in my opinion, should be off the table. So with that said, I would support, you know, remaining at our current location with a remodel plan with an additional purchase of a South County substation or satellite office. I truly believe that we need to make a concentrated effort to better serve our southern portion of our community when or if tragedy occurs. Having fuel available in that portion of the community could go a long way during a natural disaster response, as which was demonstrated to the Napa community in 2007. I will note in all of our discussions that I've struggled with the narrative of purchasing property when we have available property in hand. I'm well aware of the economic benefit of having a business park on our tax rolls and the potential of jobs created. But the problem for me was, and still is, that the county has owned that property for decades with little movement. And I can't logically justify purchasing something while sitting on a separate property, even if that property wasn't the most appealing. And then when we discuss lives and so on and so forth, I can't weigh one life over another or one issue over our issue of staying at that site versus passing those issues to another. I agree with Mark or Commissioner Quila when he says that and Commissioner Toyoka, because it's it's not like that property is going to remain unused. Well, we would either sell it or pass it off to another county facility. And I don't feel like passing off what we feel, you know, what is obvious from this discussion, is a location that, you know, it, I can't, I'm just dealing with the logistics. And then I look down the road and see our school district, Astoria School District, Astoria High School, and other businesses in that same zone, in that same risk. And so when I look at our children and I look at our county work facility, I can't weigh one over the other. And so I feel like, for me, I have to take that emotion off the table in this decision and focus on logistics. We need fuel in South County, and we need to upgrade our shops because our shops are circa 1960s. So that has to happen, however we decide. So if it's staying or if it's continuing this conversation and looking for other locations, great. But for me personally, the sort yard is off the table, and the business park is off the table. I guess my final thought is, let's get the business park sold. It's been a part of our conversation since I came into office. But we've had it for so very long, so let's get it sold. And then we can we can look at other properties. So that's just my personal thoughts. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson, and we've got just a couple of minutes, so go ahead.
Sure thing. And I appreciate that the commissioners are engaging in this conversation. Hooray, that's progress. I would say I'm doing my best not to get into a North County/South County mindset here. Reconfirming that we're keeping our headquarters for our essential public works on the other side of the river is a non-starter for me. So I appreciate, I agree with Commissioner Banks. Let's, for heaven's sakes, get that business park sold and back on the tax rolls. Let's continue looking at what's an adequate solution. Because for me, keeping headquarters on the other side of the river, absolutely a non-starter, because in my mind, what that means is, I'm going to do it, sorry, the North County is selling out the South County and writing us off. We need to have public works available for all over the county. So let's look for, let's continue discussing. Let's look for ways that are win-win, not win-lose. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson, and I agree with your sentiment. We're looking for a win-win situation here. I want to thank our presenters here, Jeff and Adam from McKenzie. Thank you so much. We appreciate the hard work and the report. And again, I think we've got about two minutes if we want to take a quick break before we start our regular meeting. Is that okay with everybody? Couple minutes? Okay. Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, as soon as we get Commissioner Webb back, we'll go ahead and get started.
Kate, could I please have you stay on mute?
All right, I think we're all here. We'll go ahead and call this regular session of the Board of Commissioners to order. The Board of Commissioners, as the governing body of Clatsop County, all county service districts for which this box, so X, is now meeting in regular session. Teresa, can we have a call?
Commissioner Banks?
Here.
Commissioner Toyoka?
President.
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'm here.
Chair Quila?
Here.
Thank you.
And I see that we still have one person. Kate, could you have your mute? Could you put your on, please? Thank you so much. We had an opportunity to review the agenda at the work session. Is there any other discussion or a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the agenda.
Second? Moving second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, agenda is approved. We'll move on to business from the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda except public hearings or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public who have registered to speak?
Yes, there are.
All right, if you've registered to speak, please wait until your name is called, then give your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes to speak. Teresa?
Reba, yes, Reba Owen.
Reba Owen, 79124 Tide Avenue, Cove Beach, Oregon. This is regarding beach access. A few weeks ago, some men built a large illegal fire on the beach at the base of Columbia Street Access. Cannon Beach Fire Department responded but couldn't get down the access. The chief told me this has been a long time frustration with the county. Around the same time, I called the state police because two women had poached hundreds of mussels from the Marine Reserve. Again, the access closest to the reserve was impassable. At your last meeting, Manager Boone promised to do the right thing. Nothing has been done. I hope that inaction is not your idea of doing the right thing. Also, you don't need to worry about the Clatsop Access because somebody has already cleared the trail. I don't think it was the county, and all it took were a pair of clippers. Thank you.
Thank you, Reba.
Yes, Joanne Cornelius?
My name is Joanne Cornelius, and I live at 44920 Road Tide Avenue. Actually, it's Falcon Cove, but the address is Arch Cape, Oregon. I want to express my thanks to the staff and for recommendations made on, for considering a moratorium, encouraging the commissioners to consider a moratorium for STRs in the unincorporated areas of the county, and thanking the staff for recommending this moratorium. I've been involved in many parts of planning in our community of South Clatsop County since the beginning of SB 100, close to 40 years ago. I've lived in this area since '72, which is 50 years, and I have intimate knowledge of our environment, the good, the dangerous, the limits, et cetera. I believe that the staff you commissioners rely on for recommendations probably haven't lived here long and have little awareness of this area most affected by STRs. I believe it's imperative that you listen to those of us here who have lived and are incredibly concerned about our community, not what is convenient for appeasing a commercial organization. Have faith in your own instincts. Think about your communities and how you feel about them. By the way, I'd like to kind of find out what's happened with Goal One. Why can't our comments go through the planning process? Why can't the Planning Commission listen to our concerns? That's the purpose of the Planning Commission. Remember why the first goal was public involvement? That's because the public of the local communities know their homes. It says right in our county webpage, Planning Commission. Citizens appointed by the Board of Commissioners who reviews and recommends land use changes to the county's comprehensive plan. Where are they now? I think it's important that we be considering and listening to and having our planning commissions involved with all these problems. Those of us who improve our community, help our neighbors, volunteer in our community, pay taxes to the county, are feeling that because we're unincorporated and ask for help from our county to right the wrong of allowing commercial activity in our area are just too much trouble to be bothered. And the dollars that are received from commercial activities is more important. Those who live in towns in this county have much better protection for their citizens, voters, and business owners. I guess it comes down to money for the county.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Cornelius.
Thank you.
That's all the public comment. Chair Quila?
Thank you, everyone, for the public comment. We'll go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar, Mr. Chair.
Second? Moving second to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Consent calendar is approved. We'll move on to the Commissioner Liaison Reports. We'll start with Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I mentioned, I'm still working on housing on a regional coastal housing collaborative basis. We're still working on fire. We're still working on water, both locally, Commissioner Webb with the Planning Department and myself with AOC and regional and statewide issues on that. I have one additional item. I got a letter about the Vietnam War Memorial Fund. And I brought this before the commission several years ago. It didn't get a a support response then, but I'd like to bring that back before the commission. So I'm going to be giving that to the county manager for distribution to my colleagues and hope for consideration of Clatsop County's support for a Vietnam War Memorial Fund contribution, or at least indicating our support of that effort. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Bang?
A couple of things. I was at a Fair Board meeting here this last week and very excited to say that Fair is going to be wide open. There will be no There will be no restrictions at Fair for the children participating or for our folks that choose to visit. It is an exciting prospect for parents like myself to see our children to be able to participate again in the most normal atmosphere that we can possibly get back to. So Fair is going to be open. I hope everyone chooses to purchase tickets to come visit. And also, we are going to have some two amazing bands playing that weekend. So anyhow, that's just in regards to Fair. It's fire season. Our state has dispatched two of their three IMT teams. And things are happening throughout the state. I look forward to our conversation that we're going to be having as a county tomorrow. In regards to what I witnessed today in Seaside was pretty amazing. Our community is coming alive. I mean, we've been alive, obviously, but Seaside hosted a national dance competition here this past week. And to just see our businesses popping and seeing the smiling faces and seeing folks just come together again has been pretty amazing. And I also, just a cautious reminder is people are understaffed, so please have grace when you visit our businesses. They're stressed. They're understaffed. Please have grace. And other than that, yeah, things are plugging right along in childcare and in other adventures. I really enjoyed meeting with some constituents this last week and enjoyed conversation because I think a lot of us have mentioned that our community has a lot of history in it. And it's always good to figure out the root of a concern versus just saying that you understand it. So anyhow, that's it for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Commissioner Toyoka?
Well, I just wanted to take a moment just to state that, you know, we have, in our county, we have issues. We have, you know, homeless issues. We have substance abuse issues. We've got, you know, we're not the perfect rural county, but I sleep really well at nights because we have incredible agencies, law enforcement agencies at every city and in the county that protect us. And when we lose someone, as we did in Astoria, it's not isolated to Astoria. North County, South County, everywhere in the county feels that effect. And it just reiterates the importance of what they do for us and the selfless acts that they do daily to protect all of us and ensure our safety. So, you know, we're not the perfect county, but I just wanted to make sure that we thanked law enforcement agencies out there, state, county, and appreciate what they provide for us every day that we can sit here in comfort. So I just wanted to make sure we state, I just wanted to state that just that I'm very thankful for our law enforcement.
Yes, I completely agree. Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, a few things. On the housing authority front, we are progressing through the hiring process for a new executive director. And I've actually had a couple of meetings in the last week. And that's very promising. Everything else is really coming together. HUD continues to work very closely with the Housing Authority in an extremely positive and not punitive way. I think it's pretty admirable that the Housing Authority came, or excuse me, that HUD came in and did an audit of the Housing Authority and basically gave them a zero out of 100 as a score. But instead of being punitive, they have sent staff here. They've been very available to our staff, and they've really been terrific. And the consultants that we hired have brought in some wonderful staff, and I really feel good. The things extremely important to Clatsop County are that the Trillium at Chelsea Gardens project in Warrington, we're still arguing over, mostly with the city of Warrington, about the improvements that they want to see on the project. But we're very committed to making something good happen from it. We're also exploring opportunities for funding for a restoration of the Owens and Dare Apartments. And the folks who live there are very, very pleased to hear this because they've had a number of unaddressed problems for a number of years. And so, and we're going to try very, very hard to make it a real model for a restoration project and turning a very valuable property in terms of Astoria's history into something that benefits by every, by the entire abroad base of people in the community. So that's, that's pretty wonderful. I wanted to just do a shout out to the fact that Commissioner Thompson mentioned, I think in our last work session, that Senator Wyden had been here to talk about a new piece of legislation. And the county organized a, basically, all of the law enforcement actors, chiefs in the county at a kind of a roundtable discussion with a lot of the other social service providers. And Commissioner Thompson, as the vice chair, was wonderful. I mean, she ran a wonderful meeting. And the discussion was very positive. And Matt Phillips, as he is wont to do, gave me something that I'm going to needlepoint onto a pillow, that one of the secrets of good government are partnerships. And it was very evident in that room that there are a lot of people working very, very hard on our mental health issues in this county. And they're learning a lot from each other. And hooray. My last thing is that in reviewing the sheriff's, the sheriff's contract or, yeah, it's basically a grant from the State Marine Board. And the detail in which this application was, I realized that I don't know enough about the sheriff's maritime responsibilities. And I know that I've had conversations with the sheriff about them, and I know that sometimes, well, often, the State Marine Board is a partner, and the Coast Guard is a partner. And I'm going to suggest that maybe it would be kind of cool, since field trips seem to be in the air again. I had a lot of questions about this program that I didn't want to, oh, there he is, that I didn't want to just take the time to ask. But I'd love to have a field trip, maybe that we could all go on and see firsthand, in person, exactly what this force looks like in our county. Because it looked to me like the sheriff was covering an awful lot of water with very few people. And I'd love to see it hands-on. So eyes on. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. I think that would be very worthwhile. I'd love to see it myself. Our sheriff is a man of many talents. He can needlepoint. He can do all kinds of things. So I definitely think that we should also have a discussion on working waterfronts and what all happens here in Astoria and Tongue Point. And I think we're often not aware of all the economic activity that takes place right on a waterfront. So I'd love to expand that, to include that some point as well. Again, we'll have our healthcare stakeholders meeting. We have a lot of stakeholder, a lot of interest in this. That'll be next Tuesday at 3:00. We'll also be meeting in a joint session with the Planning Commission. It's the first time that that's happened since I've been on the commission, and I'm looking forward to that as well. Other than that, I'm anxious that we will be getting back into in-person meetings as soon as we are able to accommodate that at the Guy Boynton Room and still have an option for hybrid models so that people can join virtually, because I know that's important as well. So we're moving forward on that, as I understand. I'll turn it over to our county manager.
Chair Quila, members of the board, just to follow up on Chair Quila's comments. Our staff is working to get the Boynton ready for the hybrid meetings. And so we hope that the first meetings within August will be in that hybrid mode. We should have more information tomorrow about the readiness of that. But the Planning Commission meeting next week will be in person for the work session. Another good news story is that Clatsop County will be getting a bottle redemption center. And the open house for that will be August 13th at 2:30 over at Fred Meyer in Warrington, and your board is invited. And if you'd like to attend, if you could just RSVP to Monica, and I'm sure that they would want to announce your attendance at that. So just to talk real quickly about beach access, Oregon Parks and Rec and the county has met about the beach access issues down in South County. And there is folks getting together for a site visit to look at those beach access points at the end of July. And that will include State Parks and Rec as well as Chief Recman from Cannon Beach and the county. As you may know and appreciate, this is a layered complexity of overlapping jurisdiction. And the county needs Oregon Parks and Rec to be an active partner with us because they do have the permitting process for any improvements or activities in these beach access points. So they will be down there with us, and we will work through any of the requirements and then have a plan to discuss with your board thereafter. So there is a lot of work going into it. It's summer, and we're juggling schedules and everything else, but there is progress being made, so I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, county manager. If we don't have any other items, we'll move on to the public hearing. The public hearing this evening is for vacation relocation of a portion of Fern Hill County Road. It's on page 160 of our packet. And we'll go ahead and start with the staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chair Quila, my name is Vance Whitson. I'm in the county surveyor tonight. Got the issue before the commission is to conduct a public hearing to approve the road vacation authorized the chair to sign the resolution and order vacating portions of Fern Hill County Road and to sign the acceptance of dedications of portions of new portions of Fern Hill County Road right away at the same time. Our first meeting on April 14th was to accept the petition from Philip Patworth and Fung Van Horn. At that time, you ordered a Roadmaster's report. On June 9th, the county engineer presented the Roadmaster's report to you. We've notified all the joining property owners and everybody along Fern Hill County Road and advertised. And so this is the final step in the road vacation process. If you remember back on April 14th, I kind of described it a little bit. This was a bit different than some of the run-of-the-mill ones that we presented before. We wanted to keep our eye on this one. And luckily, it appears, at least as of the moment, don't want to jinx it, but it appears everything's gone smoothly. And so I haven't heard anything from any responses from any of the owners along the road. There may be some here tonight. But beyond that, the fiscal impact, as we discussed in April, the petitioners are going to pay the road, or have paid the road vacation fee and then the expense of the surveying and preparing the legal descriptions. Feel free to look at the attachments, and if you have any questions, feel free to let me know.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions of staff? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Well, this is kind of a tongue-in-cheek question. How did you do this? This is like magic sauce in terms of community building. I mean, of all the times that I've been sitting on the dais and listening to how neighbors work together, this seems smooth and comfortable, and people are taking each other into account in a very positive way. So that's what it looks like. Am I seeing accurately?
Well, luckily, we'll take the wins when we get it on these. Sometimes they, like I said, in April, they can fall apart. So we really wanted to be kind of cautious and make sure we did it right. And it really is the owners on either sides' cooperation, willing to work with all the complicated. I mean, this road vacation is, and you couple it in with the property line adjustment and all the agreements that need to be made. And you're right, it takes a lot of agreement amongst neighbors. And, yeah, they did a really good job. And as I said on the last vacation we had, I really, you know, am thankful for just what you said, the ability of neighbors to work together. It's encouraging.
Agreed. Well, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public who have registered to speak?
No, there are not.
And is there anyone else who would like to speak? If I don't see any or hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Anything additional by staff? Anything from the commission? If not, we'll need a motion.
Who's district is this? Is this Commissioner Bangs?
It is. I just don't have the motion in front of me right now. It's on my other screen, and I can't get it open.
All right, then I move to approve the resolution and order vacating portions of Fern Hill County Road Number 131 and authorize the board chair to sign the resolution and order and the acceptance of the dedication deeds.
Second.
The movement seconded to approve the resolution and order vacating portions of Fern Hill County Road Number 131 and authorizing the board chair to sign the resolution and order and the acceptance of the dedication deeds. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much, Vance. We'll move on to the business agenda. We have one item on the business agenda this evening. Adopting the proposed fee schedule for Clatsop County that will be implemented on July 15th, 2021. That's on page 181 of the packet. And Jennifer Carlson is joining up. Hello, the new mom.
Yes, almost getting close to four months now.
Oh, that's so new. Okay.
Yes. Okay, thanks for having me, everyone. The proposed fee schedule is for numerous county departments. The need for these adjustments within each department is a result of departmental evaluation of the existing fees and whether the existing fees are still explicable. If there's a need for new fees as a result of new services and whether the existing fees are covered, or existing fees as covering the cost to provide the services. So in addition to this, every few years, we ask the departments to do a more thorough analysis of their fees where they're asked to evaluate based on the cost of the FTE, providing the service, the cost of materials to provide the service, and a comparison to other jurisdictions in the fees they charge to provide the service. So what we have here, I've included in the document, the red highlights throughout it are the changes, the additions, the deletions. And yeah, any questions? And I think we also need to have public comment on this.
Okay, any questions on the fee schedule from the commission? If we need to have public comment, I'll go ahead and open the public comment. Has anyone signed up to provide public comment?
No, they have not.
No, they have not.
Is there anyone that has joined us who would like to comment on the fee schedule? Okay, I don't see anybody, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment. Any other comments, questions from the commission? If not, we'll need a motion to adopt the proposed fee schedule.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board adopt the proposed fee schedule to be implemented effective July 15th, 2021, as presented.
Second.
Moving seconded to adopt the proposed fee schedule to be implemented effective July 15th, 2021, as presented. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion is passed, and it's the fee schedule is adopted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the good of the order. Anyone have anything to to share with the group? Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn, but we are going to adjourn into executive session. The Clatsop County Board of Commissioners will now meet in executive session.